The June 2 meeting of the Board of Cumberland County Commissioners will come to order. Commissioner Kenneth Edge is providing the invocation for us this morning.
Do you stand as we honor God and country, please? Most gracious and loving God, we thank you for our many blessings. We thank you for the opportunity to serve the citizens of Cumberland County. Our decisions are important not only to those we serve, but also important to the future generations. Continue to help us to have a vision of what is right. Grant us wisdom to understand and the courage to do what we believe is right. Continue to watch over our military and our veterans. Help those that are homeless and without hope. Give them the satisfaction of knowing that you are there for them as you are for all of us. In the next couple of weeks, Lord, we pray for your divine guidance as we labor together to hire a county manager and adopt a budget for this county. Help us to honor and serve you through our service to others in the name of the great Creator, we pray. Amen. Join me in a pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And now I'd like to call on Commissioners Ed Melvin if Rodney Bean is in the audience. He's probably held up for parking reasons. So for the next item, we need the approval of the agenda, please.
I move.
Second.
Madam Chair.
Oh, that's right. I'm sorry. Would you please hold your motion?
Yes.
Madam Chair, I would like to add two closed sessions, first being Economic Development under MCGS 143-318.11A4. In addition, I'd like to add an attorney-client closed session, North Carolina General Statute
All right, now I will accept the motion, please.
Motion.
All right, it's been moved and seconded that we approve the agenda with additions. Those in favor?
Unanimous.
And now for the consent agenda.
Madam Chair, I'd like to pull Item C for an explanation from the county attorney before we approve that as part of the consent agenda.
All right. We can approve... Kelly, would you come here, please? I've broken something. Thank you.
Madam Chair, I move for approval of the agenda with the exception of Item C.
Second.
All right, it's been moved and seconded that we approve the agenda with...
Consent agenda with...
Consent agenda with the exception of the item mentioned. Those in favor?
Unanimous.
Madam Chair, Item C is... I just would like to have an explanation. As I read this, I do not see any monetary settlement, but maybe the county attorney could enlighten us on this.
There is no monetary settlement. It's an agreement to basically determine how we're going to move forward in the future with the use of these logos. There's no money involved.
Okay.
Now, the trademark, there will probably be a filing fee. I don't know what that amount is. It would be minimal. We're actually wanting to register this trademark now to avoid this in the future.
All right, thank you.
Thank you. And with that, I'll move that we approve the Item C.
Second.
All right, it's been proved and moved and seconded that we approve Item C. Those in favor?
Unanimous.
Item three, Madam Chair, is a public hearing on the fiscal year 2015 fare changes for the Cumberland County Community Transportation Program, and I'd like to call Ms. Christine Wagner for this presentation.
Okay. Ms. Wagner, good morning.
Good morning. We have not actually raised our fares in three years, and in order to properly maintain our local match requirements for these three grants, we are looking at raising the fare from 225 to 250. Not only do we observe... we advertised this in the Fayetteville Observer on May 7th, but we've already started discussing this with our clients and haven't had any major concerns or issues from any of our clientele. Our Transportation Advisory Board has approved this change, and so we're asking the Commissioners to approve this as well.
Okay. Thank you. Are there questions? Oh, I need to open... This is a public hearing.
Yes, ma'am.
All right. I need to open the public hearing on the rural public... on the transportation. And now, Mr... are there speakers?
There are no speakers.
Okay. And I'm going to close the public hearing. Mr. Evans?
Thank you, Madam Chair. In regards to this item, ma'am, thank you for being here this morning.
Thank you.
When you say clients, what clients do you serve now?
The riders of these services that the county already serves.
Is this where you actually have reservations from individuals that called the day before and you go pick up?
Yes, sir.
And how many of those riders do you normally have?
Daily?
Yes.
Anywhere between 100 to 200 daily?
From 100 to 200?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. My concern... Thank you. My concern about this to my fellow Commissioners is I understand that we haven't had a fare increase in three years, but I am concerned about senior citizens' increase as well as for the disabled, the handicap, I think I read that correctly.
Mm-hmm.
The general fee, I don't have a problem with, but as far as for our seniors and the disabled, I do have concerns about that. I really would like to see that we, as a board, consider revamping this rate, if we can, from the additional increase for our seniors and the seniors and elderly, as well as for our disabled, and the general increase remain as suggested. Yes, as I stated earlier, I do understand that it's been three years since the increase, but we also have individuals... 25 cents is probably will hurt somebody. It probably will, even though they may not ride every day, but it may cause difficulties for some individuals because of our different things that they may have to do. And so that's what I would like to present to the Commission, to the Board of Commission, and also to staff who presented this to us as well.
All right. Follow-up question. Did I understand you to say that you had informed your clients already?
Yes, ma'am. And in addition, just so it's clarified that we have to cover this money. It is a local match requirement, so the only other option is the county covering the match. We've always covered this from local fare revenue. So it's not that we can't... we cannot raise the fares, but then the county somehow would have to come up with the money.
I understand that.
How much money would this raise, in your opinion?
I did kind of an average, looking at these three programs. It would be anywhere between $4,000 and $5,000 to cover that local match.
All right. Are there any questions? Mr. Evans?
The four... I'm sorry.
That's okay.
The $4,000 to $5,000 that you're speaking in terms of, the county would be responsible for that?
Yes, sir. Yes, in order to receive these grants, we have to provide that local match somehow.
And the amount is $4,000 to $5,000?
$4,000 to $5,000. It would be that quarter difference.
Okay. Okay. Well, and I must say also that with this increase, I just would hate to see... It seems like with most government entities that whenever there's an increase, it always fall on the back of those that aren't as fortunate as others. And if there's some way that we can assist those individuals to the very best of our ability, I think that is our duty to do so.
Okay.
I think.
Thank you, Mr. Evans. Are there any other additions or corrections or concerns? If not, I move that we approve the fare changes for this program.
Second.
Those in favor of the motion?
Voting in favor, Commissioners Melvin, Edge, Chairman Council, Commissioners Faircloth and King voting in opposition. Commissioner Alvin... I'm sorry, Commissioner Evans.
Thank you. Thank you very much, Ms. Wagner.
Item number four is consideration of the Bullard Circle Water Project, and I'd like to recognize Mr. Jeffrey Brown.
Good morning, Madam Chair and members of the board. Hope you're all doing well this morning. I'm here to present to you the item of consideration of Bullard Circle Water Project. As you know, just for brief background information, you know, Environmental Health conducted well sampling and determined that there was numerous wells within the Bullard Circle community that contained high levels of arsenic that exceeded the drinking water standard for the state of North Carolina. In attempt to communicate this to the public, we had a public meeting that was held on March 20th. And then following that public meeting, based on the input we gathered from the citizens, the Public Utilities Division of our department felt that it was imperative to send out a survey to gather some input from the residents, give them opportunity to, again, be heard in addition to the public meeting in which they were able to ask questions and speak and bring their concerns to the county. Right here is the map that was shared at the public meeting. This is... the red dots indicate the wells that were sampled that exceeded the state drinking water limit for arsenic. There was 22 residents that were... that fell into this category. Here's a brief overview of the results from the survey that we sent out. We mailed out 75 surveys. We received 47 surveys back. The results up top were the ones that were... they had drinking water wells that were below the drinking water limit. The ones in blue were the ones that were a part of the 22. As you can see from the results, you know, the overwhelming majority of it felt that the county should move as a... to a special assessment in order to provide water to the Actions that the county has taken thus far, the county requested PWC participate in the project based on their existing policy to contribute 25% of the main cost when there's contamination involved, and PWC responded and said that they would be willing to participate at 25% of the main cost. Also requested the city of Fayetteville waive the annexation requirement. As you know, that the city voted unanimously last Tuesday night on May 27th to exempt this project from the annexation policy that they currently have in place. Next steps, we feel that one of the earliest next steps that need to be taken is to issue a RFQ for the project. Basically, that would be our first steps in order to get an engineering survey firm on board to start the project. Also, the Board of Commissioners will have to adopt a preliminary assessment resolution. This is standard and required by the general statute. This will define the percentage of cost of work to be assessed to the citizens. It defines the terms of payment and also sets a time and date for a public hearing will give the citizens an opportunity to weigh in on the project and issues that are outlined in the preliminary assessment resolution. And we'll also need to develop and adopt interlocal agreement with PWC to define the project in far as defining each organization's role and responsibility in moving the project This right here is the overview of the area. The parcels that are shaded are the parcels that would be included as part of the assessment cost. There are 66 parcels that would take part in the assessment of the project and paid 50% of the project. As you can see, there's a couple parcels that are not highlighted. Again, if they don't abut a public right of way, then we cannot include those as part of the assessment process because in order for them to obtain water, they'd have to get a private easement from the individual property owner that's between them and the right of way in order to get water to their property. This is a kind of a preliminary rough estimate. We're looking approximately half a million dollars for the total cost of the project. That's PWC participating 25%. I've kind of put asterisks beside it out because they've clarified that they pay 25% of the water main cost and maybe not being a part of the overall cost of the project. They're just talking about the water main extensions in the right of way. So, you know, it'd be pretty close to that 125, but again, I don't know what that number would be without seeing a detailed estimate as far as, you know, what it's going to cost for the ladders and the meters to be installed. Estimated cost to the property owners is $250,000. Like I said, it'll be 66 parcels assessed. Break that out against what's their portions, $3,787.88 would be their estimated assessment. Below that, you'll see a couple different scenarios. We've got, you know, 6% interest at over 10 years, 6% interest over 15 years, and the same for 8% over 10 years and 8% over 15 years. And that just gives you an idea of what that would cost for the citizens to participate. Again, once the assessment is put in place, you know, they have the opportunity to... if they have the means and necessary funds, they can pay that assessment upfront and within 30 days, once it's levied, with no interest at all. Recommendations to this board, county feels at this time that the Board of Commissioners should adopt a preliminary assessment resolution at the June 16th board meeting, and the terms that the staff is recommending at this time would the citizens pay 50% be outlined in the resolution, that it be done at 6% interest over a 15-year period. These are the same terms that the last water project that the county participated in with PWC. That's the same terms that they were outlining that one. That was the Brooklyn Circle Project. And in that resolution to set a public hearing for August 18th for the citizens to weigh in on the project. We also asked that the board direct staff to develop an RFQ to be advertised, and that will be advertised following the adoption of the resolution on June 16th. And the county has some FIF credits from previous projects that we've participated in and asked that we use some of those credits to offset the cost to the citizens. There is a... they will have to be FIF fees of $540 per hookup, so we're asking that we be able to move forward and using our credits that some are set to expire in the near future and that we use those against the cost of the project to offset that to the citizens. So at this time, I'll entertain any questions from the board.
Are there questions from any board members? Mr. King?
Jeffrey, could you go back a couple slides, please? Go back a couple, three... go back, go back. Right there.
Right here?
Yes. The area up at the top that's not... I'm assuming that's not developed. Is that... can that be developed in the future?
The large parcel?
Yes.
Yes, sir. It's about an 85-acre tract. It's owned by Broadwell Land Company, and there is the opportunity to develop that in the future.
So if that were developed, I guess they would have the same challenges in the future. We don't know whether or not they have some situations there or not, do we?
Well, obviously, if they develop in the future, then they'll have to petition for annexation if they want PWC to provide utility services. And we've already had some discussions preliminary with the property owner as well as PWC because there's some interest from the property owner to possibly pay the difference between upsizing that line that would be required to serve that vacant parcel in relation to what's needed at this current time to serve the residents within the community. So if that can be worked out, I mean, from a planning perspective, it makes sense for PWC to entertain that offer and put in the larger line that would serve the vacant parcel in the future.
All right. Thanks very much.
All right. My concern is the timeline. The timeline goes back to we're going to do something on June 16th, and then when do we think we can have clean water to these residents?
There's a lot of unknowns at this time, and one being the right of way issues. We've... the county attorney's office has identified there's six different owners involved in the ownership of those private streets. Four of those are out of state, so there's going to be a challenge to get an easement signed, we feel like, moving forward, and there's a possibility that this board may have to entertain condemnation proceedings if we can't work out the easement acquisition process.
All right. I wish for the general public to please be informed that absolutely nothing in county government is simple. And even though we gave you an impossible deadline of 30 days, it looks as if that we still going forward are going to be taking yet some more time to eradicate the legalities connected with this project. I am very sorry and apologize, but every water project that we have entered, whenever you're dealing with three different government... three different agencies plus the general public, it is... it is difficult. I also understand that some residents are anxious about this process and would like very much to be briefed on each and every step of this process. I've tried to return some phone calls myself. Some have been successful and some have not, but there is no way that we can prepare a clear path right now and a clear timetable as much as we would like to. So we are... we are appreciative to the Board of... I can't even think. The PWC Board as well as the City Council for their unanimous approval of this project. Without their approval and their collaboration, we would probably be about two years down the road getting this project underway. And as it is, it... I hope and pray that we can have a groundbreaking in 2014.
There's a lot of obstacles to overcome. I can assure you, from a county's perspective, from staff, we are working diligently to make sure that we can get this project started as quickly as possible.
All I'm doing is expecting the impossible.
Understand.
Mr. Edge?
Madam Chair, would it be appropriate, Mr. Attorney, we have to make a motion as related to this recommendation that because there are some possible condemnation issues coming up, would it be appropriate to recommend as part of this motion that to move forward with condemnation if the assessments cannot be obtained?
It would speed things up, yes, sir. And we don't know that there's... that there has to be condemnation, but I suspect there will simply because these folks don't even know they own these roads. They're the heirs of the man who developed this back in 1950, I believe it was, and it's a... but they have... a portion, the main road there up through that first, the large curve, that is, has been set by DOT. The rest of it has not... none of the rest of it has. And when we say roads, they're in really bad shape. It's going to be a challenge to get the lines in the existing situation, so it's... but it would speed things up, yes, sir.
Okay. Madam Chair, I'm prepared to make a motion, and before I do that, I want to thank Jeffrey, because I know he has been moving on this, and sometimes it's quick to thank the governing boards, but we don't thank our staff because he's done the legwork on this. So thank you, Jeffrey, for your work on this. And I would move that the Engineering and Infrastructure Director and County Management set a preliminary assessment resolution to be placed on the June 16th agenda for adoption, that a public hearing date will be established as part of this resolution, and the Board of Commissioners is directing staff to develop and publish a request for qualifications for the selection of a full-service engineering firm that can provide the necessary surveying and engineering needed for this project. This will be advertised following the adoption of the resolution on June 16th, and the surveying component is most critical as those will be needed in order to acquire the necessary easements. And as part of this motion, I would go ahead and make a motion that we move forward with those condemnations if the easements cannot be received.
Second.
All right. You've heard the motion. Are there additional questions? If not, those in favor?
Unanimous.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Brown. I know you've spent a lot of hours on this.
Thank you.
Some sleepless nights, too. Thank you.
Item number five is presentation of the fiscal year 2014-15 federal legislative agenda by Sally Shutt, and she'll also introduce the other partners in this process.
Good morning, Madam Chair and Board of Commissioners. For many years now, the City of Fayetteville and Cumberland County and the Fayetteville Regional Chamber have partnered to collaboratively engage with the federal government and pursue funding assistance for strategic focus areas, all of which have been identified in an annual collectively established agenda. And so today, the partnership is bringing to you a draft of the FY 2015 federal agenda. So I would like to recognize the partnership's Federal Program Coordinating Committee, who are in attendance today, Rebecca Rogers Carter from the City of Fayetteville, Hannah Aaronreich and Russ Rogerson from the Economic Development Alliance. For the last five months, beginning in February 1, the partnership hired Faygre BD, which is a federal services consulting firm, to conduct a federal affairs assessment and assist in developing the community federal agenda. So this morning, David Gogel, Vice Chair of Faygre BD, will give a brief presentation to you on the federal affairs assessment and the draft agenda. Now, the items in your packet include that assessment, the draft agenda, and a copy of the MOU approved back in 2013 for the partnership. So our recommendation is for you to accept the information and then provide feedback on the draft agenda, and then a federal final version can be presented to the... at the June 16th meeting. So Mr. Gogel is going to come forward. He will also be speaking tonight at 5:00 to the City Council and presenting the same information.
Thank you all for allowing us to appear today. This has been a really interesting project to work with your staff, excellent staff, and... staff, and we've had tremendous cooperation. It's been a really interesting project for us because, as you know, your community is not unique in America, but pretty close to as a garrison community, and it is, creates its own challenges and opportunities. And we've enjoyed very much working with your folks to understand this. I'm going to have a very brief presentation. If you want to get into questions, I'm, of course, happy to do so. But otherwise, we'll try to move through quickly because you have lots to do every day and no reason to extend it longer than you need to. Our firm is one of about, so there's about twenty-five hundred lobbying firms in Washington, and about thirty of those specialize in local governments. We're one of the larger of the companies that do this work and have been doing this since nineteen eighty-five. Your team won't get into the details, but we all have local government experience. I was a budget director in New Haven, Connecticut, and have had, served in two cabinets for large cities. It's the kind of background that we think makes us stronger than many companies because we're not just Washington-focused, we really try to understand local government. So it was a very clear goal here. We don't want a generic plan. Cumberland County and Fayetteville are not generic communities. How do we make sure that your federal affairs agenda reflect the nature of your community and address your issues specifically? One thing I do want to mention, because there's, there are always issues in a community of high priority where the federal government may or may not have a response. So for instance, in public safety, the federal government does very little to help local governments in public safety. That may be a concern and a high priority, but it is not necessarily anything that can be part of the plan because there's just not enough resource at the federal level to make it meaningful. As Sally said, we've had a five-monthed process that began earlier this year. We've had scores of interviews. We've also talked to a lot of outside folks, talked to several past post-commanders, several former garrison commanders in other communities, to try to understand how your community's relationship with BRAG differs from them and is the same as them. And what, did we learn anything from those other communities as we went through this process? Obviously, as we went through this, we identified a number of specific questions and issues that were of greater concern here than maybe somewhere else, and we got, went deeper into those things. And we'll talk about that. So no big surprise to you, you are defined by BRAG. We work in Gary, Indiana, which is a company town built by U.S. Steel. I would say that Fayetteville and Cumberland County are more of a company town, if you will, than Gary, Indiana is with U.S. Steel. The, the relationship, the depth of impact on every aspect of your community to us is just spectacularly defined, and it means that you really, as you do, need to understand this. The economy is driven by it. You know, for instance, in your housing world, homeownership here is much lower than it is in communities of comparable size because of the nature, the transient nature of so many of your residents. And it, that's the kind of thing that can, has an influence on your community, and we're trying to understand how that affects this. Your social issues are, again, exacerbated by certain aspects of the BRAG relationship. We identified five particular issues that we thought needed further and deeper work. We're going to do, do more on that. What we've discovered is that although there is a garrison command structure for every community like Cumberland County and Fayetteville, there's not a single model of how you deal with the base. We're wondering whether this might be an opportunity for this community to establish a model for the nation on how to have a structured relationship between the base and the community to make issues more easily resolved and identified. Three thirty-one is a new provision that allows for partnerships between local government and a base where the community can provide services on base for fees. This is a brand-new thing, you're well aware of it, I think, from the downtown work with the museum. This is only been done, I think, twice in the country so far. This may be an opportunity for the county to find collaborative ways to work with the base that will be really a model for the nation, because it's still being worked out. It's very complicated, the city folks will tell you it was hardly perfect the first time they went through this, but I think it creates opportunity. There's an Office of Economic Adjustment in the Pentagon. It was established fifty years ago to help with communities that have big influences by the base. We've discovered what we think is kind of a flaw in their law. So if you had a big community, a big contractor base, and there are a whole lot of contractors lost their jobs, there would be grants to the county to help pay for that adjustment and to do planning. A drawdown at the base, so if the base shrunk, that doesn't count. So even though you would have exactly the same loss of jobs that a community that had contractors, that, the Office of Economic Adjustment can't count that today. That may result, we may want to go back to our congressional delegation and say, we need to amend the law so that a drawdown in the number of people at the base counts the same way that a loss of contractor jobs would be counted. Just as we're thinking about the Office of Economic Adjustment for legislation, we're doing the same thing with other issues. For instance, as we're, again, we're going to talk a lot about drawdown, we think that's a very significant issue coming forward. It isn't just the total number of people at the base, but the process by which the military discharges people, we believe has potential negative impacts for the community. I think that's really where we've been focused the most. Today, there's about eight thousand soldiers per year discharged into the community. If I was going to overstate it, if I was going to come to the Commissioners and say, assuming you were another community, we're going to add eight thousand unemployed people to your community, do you want to do that? I don't think that would be a positive, right? So what we're worried about and wondering is, is we reduce the Army by eighty thousand people, will that increase the number of people discharged into Cumberland County? If we go from eight thousand to twelve thousand, for instance, per year, how will we deal with that increase where we already see impact? So the soldiers who are really strong do well, right? They have a plan, they move out, they go on. There's some percentage that don't have a plan that have other issues, and they kind of get stuck here, and that's your social services budget where they hit. As we think about that, again, the Office Economic Adjustment, the Department of Labor has some new programs that might be able to be adapted so that they can more easily address the issues of discharged soldiers. We need to understand the drawdown policies. So far, we're having some trouble understanding how they're going to decide where these soldiers are going to exit, and we need to understand that better. And then how are we going to better coordinate with the VA and the, and the WIB to make sure that we're handling the unemployed folks who come out and move them into productive employment as quickly as we can? The balance of the plan is more generic in the sense that every community worries about these things. So the first issue is grant support and strategy. So there, you are very familiar with earmarks, that was the world of the past. The current world is that of putting together grant applications and responding to competitive grants. We're working with the staff to help everybody get better at that. We're working on an economic development strategy that better, that recognizes the nature of this community. You have some areas of the, of the community that need redevelopment. We're working with staff to think about those issues. There's lots of federal programs and legislation that come out every year that we need to think about in terms of what's their impact on Cumberland County. We'll be continuing to evaluate those and share with staff the impacts those might have. And then there's issues that come up through the year. So for instance, although there wasn't really anything specific to be done, a community that might, as you just dealt with the arsenic in the water supply, that can sometimes trigger EPA involvement. So if you had issues like that, that's one of the things that we'll always be ready to respond and be as helpful as we can. And that's it.
Thank you. Are there questions? Oh, I'm sorry. Mr. King, and then Mr. Evans.
With regards to the military and the four forty wing at Pope, are you aggressively working to keep that here in Cumberland County? And if you are, what are you doing, and what kind of results are you getting?
So we've only begun to be involved. Our, our engagement to start with was to do the assessment. Presumably, when you approve a contract to move forward, we'll be brought more heavily into that process. Up till now, we've been mostly really advising around the sides on that issue, not directly in the middle of it.
Well, you realize that's a major employer in this community, we're talking about over a thousand-plus jobs out there. It appears to me that should be a primary consideration.
It certainly will be, sir. That wasn't our assignment to begin with.
Okay. You weren't, you weren't asked initially to do that?
No.
I don't understand why you weren't.
We were in a study phase, sir.
Was it an issue at that time?
No.
It was not at that time?
But it has become, it has become an issue.
Yeah, it's become an issue.
I agree with you about that.
You want to defend him?
No, sir. We are, we do serve, the city and the county serve on a coalition, the four fortieth coalition that is on there, and we have been forwarding to Fagri the articles, the resolutions that have gone forward from that task force. Ms. Rogers Carter and the chamber, of course, are involved in that task force. So we, and we've been funneling that information to you as well as to them. And your resolution did go forward to the delegation.
Okay, so it is, okay.
Yes, sir.
Mr. King, I just, on that point, we've been involved with many issues like this in other BRAG-related communities. I'd have to say your coalition is doing as good a job as I've ever seen done, is initially done. I mean, people are on top of the issues, gathering data as strongly as you can, making a very, understand that you need to make a case on how the four forty serves the nation, and I think you've done a spectacular job already. So I don't see any deficiencies in what's been done so far, and your delegation is obviously all over this.
How you, you think we got a shot?
I'm sorry?
Do you feel that we have a pretty good chance?
I think this is your very difficult times dealing with the military on any issue.
Okay.
All right, Mr. Evans?
I'm, I'm.
All right. I need to, we have previously looked at combining resources with the post and with, with our library services.
Yes, that's correct.
And our major problem was?
The salary differential of the workers in the library system, the federal workers.
So it's not that we have not tried. We, we, we recognize that, we agree with you, but the salary differential is, is, is just a huge obstacle. So as you go forward, I think this was the three thirty-one plan, please note that local communities cannot afford to compete with federal salaries.
I think what will happen is this will be a balance. When the base identifies as issues with you, it'll be a collaborative process, and some will work out and some won't. But it's interesting, you know, this is a brand-new world, so, and the kind of pressures they have on budgets are changing their world, too.
They came to us.
Right.
We didn't have the money. But we're willing.
We printed some.
We printed some. As you can tell, we are in a situation where with every, with, with the economy and with the needs that we have, there are, the needs are great, but every time you, you, you make a suggestion, you got, you're okay, this money's going to come from where? And Mr. Faircloth has not been successful in printing it.
No, we printed it.
Just won't take it, really.
Won't take it.
Madam Chair, may I provide a little bit of clarification on one point?
Yes, please.
That Mr. King brought up. The, the partnership developed a six-month contract with Fagri, and their mission was to develop and do an assessment of the community, identify the needs, and then develop the federal agenda, and that's what's been presented this morning. The next step for the partnership is to come back with a strategy and a recommendation for a lobbyist then to act on this federal agenda, and that will be coming forth in the near future.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Very happy to have you working with us on that. And thank you to all the parties involved. Item six?
Item six is consideration of designation of a voting delegate to the National Association of Counties Annual Conference in July two thousand and fourteen.
Mr. King?
Madam Chairman, are you praying that in?
Yes, I do.
I'd like to nominate our chairman, Jeanette Council.
Second.
Thank you. Would you appoint an alternate, please?
Is Miss Edge going?
Good Lord's willing, I'll be there.
I nominate Mr. Kenneth Edge as the alternate.
Second.
Madam Chair, I'm moved that the nominations be closed and that two mentioned parties be appointed by acclamation.
Second.
It has been moved, unfortunately, and seconded, that the two named people will become, the chair and the vice chair will become, those in favor?
Unanimous.
Item number seven is consideration of dissolving the Child Homicide Identification and Prevention Council, or the CHIP Council, and cor, and incorporating the activities of this council under the Community Child Protection Fatality Prevention Team.
Six. I can't find it. I'm sorry. This, item seven. There were several of us on the agenda, on the board, when this council was established in May two thousand and seven, and it was our concern at that time that there were overlapping duties and responsibilities. You see a letter to Dr., from Dr. Sharon Cooper. If there are no questions, then I am going to move that we dissolve the Child Homicide Identification and Prevention Council and incorporate activities of the CHIP Council under the Community Child Protection Fatality Prevention Team.
I second that, I got a question.
You have a question?
Yes. All right, so if I understand what you're telling me, is there, there's overlap between these two bodies?
A lot of overlapping.
So you don't need both of them, in other words?
We didn't then, I mean, yes.
All right.
I'm sorry. I'm sorry. If there are no other questions, those in favor?
Unanimous.
Thank you. There are nominations, item eight, to the boards and committees.
Madam Chair, for the United Way, I would nominate Linda Blanton, who is eligible for reappointment.
All right, Ms. Linda Blanton has been nominated. Are there other nominations? If not, let's go ahead to Parks and Recreation. Is there a nomination? Mr. Edge, is there another answer?
Madam Chair, I'm getting to it, hang on just a minute. Okay, here we go. I would like to nominate Mr. Scott Pope and Mr. Ashley, Ms. Ashley Hankins.
I heard Mr. Pope and Ms. Hankins have been nominated, are there others? If not?
And let me, let me point out that Ms. Ms. Hankins is a graduate of the Citizens Academy.
I give up. Mr. Edge, item nine?
Item nine is appointments to boards and committees. We have one for the Cumberland County Workforce Development Board. We nominate Richard Everett, and for Social Services Board, Mr. Ed Miller.
Second.
All right, you've heard the motion, those in favor?
Unanimous.
Item ten is two closed sessions that we need.
Madam Chair, I'm moved that we go in a closed session for an economic development matter and for an attorney-client privilege matter. I didn't catch the references, if the attorney will. I didn't catch the references, if the attorney will, will speak those for us, please.
All right. I'll second that motion with the proper references being attached, legal references. Those in favor? Unanimous.
For, for the record, the County Manager gave those references when she asked if they'd be added on.
Okay, when she added it on, okay. Let me remind us as we... I'm sorry. I'll remind us in closed session. Those in favor?
Unanimous.
Our motion adjourned.
So moved.
Those in favor?
Unanimous.
Thank you.